All right, we will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor.
Here.
Marsette.
Here.
Knudsen.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Brooke.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right. Comments and suggestions from citizens present. This is your opportunity to speak to any issue that you would like that is before the city or likely to come before the city that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would come up to the mic and identify yourself with your address and keep your comments brief, please, and try not to repeat other people's comments. Do we have anybody? No, we don't. All right. So, all right. So, anybody have a comment? Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Betty Crusoe. I live at 1128 Third Street. I just have like a little statement that I would like to read to council tonight for your consideration, especially in the future. So, I recently attended a neighborhood meeting regarding the development of Norlake Building on the Second and Elm Streets. It was presented to change the zoning into a B3 as it's presently an I1. I have since learned that the neighborhood meeting doesn't require city staff nor commission, council to be present. The neighbors had a lot of questions and that could have been answered to help us process the procedure while the requests and why the request and why the alternatives we could have that to the request. The meeting piqued my interest in what's the plan for downtown. We review, when reviewing the recent planning commission agendas and meetings, I saw there was a lot of plans for the downtown area that I don't think many people are aware of. There were discussions and motions regarding the Gangnam property and the development of 109 apartments. There are variances being considered on size, height, setbacks, and zoning. There's development at the Marina, talks at the Fire Hall, future development, and finding the ownership of many buildings in one block area by one owner lends the thoughts to future development. This is very concerned as a lifelong resident. I understand that things need to change and develop to keep our downtown viable, just like in the amazing restaurants and the retail stores that we have in the old bank building and the Ben Franklin, the old drugstore and the old Olson's department store of yesterday. Without change, we would not have these cool retail places and downtown Hudson would not be the destination for so many people. I'd like council to pause for a moment and look at downtown as a whole, for our local taxpayers and for those who drive here to enjoy our town. What development best suits us all, such as my thoughts on 109 apartments? Do we want a large development downtown? Why change the height and zoning setbacks for this developer and what kind of precedence does this make for the future? Can we allow this development with some scale down in numbers, moving it back, making it less obstructing, which would require setbacks instead of the zero setbacks they're requesting? The size of this planned development of this apartment building would be overwhelming when you walk by it. It blocks views. It blocks the sunshine on Second Street. It blocks downtown views from the riverway if walking on the dyke. Huge buildings take away from our quaint Rivertown image. What about the amount of people added to downtown? If these renters frequent our downtown, how many more load will that put on our businesses before they lose customers? I already wait for two hours to enjoy a restaurant. Will I be willing to wait longer? Personally, I will not, and I will find somewhere else to go. How many apartment dwellers will frequent our gift shops? Those are supported by destination shoppers, but the lack of parking might keep them away from this. I think there are many issues that need to be looked at for the best downtown development. Here is a list of some things that I would ask you to review and look at when you're downtown, when you're looking at downtown development. Are we maintaining our Rivertown atmosphere? What businesses are needed in the downtown area to keep it viable for the future? How will this impact the businesses presently in the city? Can there be a historical architecture for new buildings? Are views impacted from Main Street, from First Street, from Riverview, from Dyke, from Prospect Park? What are parking and traffic impacts? Combining parcels lends to large buildings. Is this the best thing for downtown? Spot zoning is always a bad idea. Are variances needed? Why and for whose benefit? Variances have their purpose, and they're forcing us to take a look to see what is the best way to achieve the plan and for why are these variances? How far will the development spread to the neighborhoods? So many impacts will be handled by the proper development of downtown. I'd like to ask council to pause and develop a downtown committee to help shape this development plan. There has been talk of this in the past, but it has never happened. I'd sure like to ask council again to establish a downtown and design and review committee. That's it. Thank you. Thanks, Betty. Any other comments? Mary Claire.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mary Claire Potter, President of the Hudson Chamber, and I'm here tonight to just give you a few updates. In talking with the lodging properties, the past five months, they've been running from 75% to 90% occupancy, which is an increase from 2021. For some, they're still not able to offer all of their rooms because of staffing shortages, but that's a great encouragement on that front. One of the two movies that was filmed in Hudson in 2019, Christmas Lovers Anonymous, premiered on the Great American Family Network. Now, how many have you watched the Great American Family Network? Okay, come on, you're all killing me. Anyway, so it's been great that it has premiered on that and it's been run several times. And so it's great to see Hudson and the businesses and the homes and the lights in Lakefront Park are featured in the films. And then you'll also see a couple locals in that film.
Self-plug.
No, John Cody. John Cody's in the movie. So, John Cody, okay. Well, right, I am in that movie too. So, I invite you all to tune in, and it is continuing to be replayed. But the important piece of this, in addition to me being in the movie, was I sent a note to the directors who did the films, and it's congratulating them on making it on the network. And I said, "We invite you back to Hudson," and they may come back, which is a great economic development piece. So, continuing those conversations. And just a few other couple highlights. I passed this out, but Santa returns on Light Up Night, November 25th, and will illuminate over 250,000 lights in Lakefront Park. And a special thank you to the businesses, individuals, families, and the city for your support of the Fourth Annual Buena Vista. It was a dream that we started four years ago. Thanks to the great support and Chamber member Save-A-Tree, who installs and does the design for us, we're able to do that event. Candlelight Stroll on December 2nd, Santa and His Critters on December 3rd. And again, I encourage you all to shop and support local. And if you can't think of a gift for someone, you can purchase chamber checks that can be used at most of the businesses around town to support them and keep those dollars here locally. Last year, we sold over $46,000 worth of chamber checks. And so that money, that stays right here in this community, supporting businesses and supporting jobs. So, events continue to help the community grow and be a great place to live, work, visit, and do business. And I thank you for your continued partnership and look forward to working with you next year. And what station do you want to check out? It's called the Great American Family Network. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mary Claire.
Somebody's heard, right?
What channel is that on our?
Can we get an autograph?
If you have Comcast, it's Channel 59. 59, thank you.
Thanks, Mary Claire. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. We have proclamation, United Way St. Croix Valley Acts of Kindness Week. Whereas, United Way St. Croix Valley hosts Acts of Kindness Week as a way to highlight the significant and positive impact kindness can have on communities. And whereas, the City of Hudson, Wisconsin recognizes the value of acts of kindness and how these acts can positively impact the person offering kindness, receiving kindness, and those witnessing kindness. And whereas nurturing kindness within ourselves and modeling kindness to others provides an opportunity to guide and inspire an entire community. And whereas, by fostering acts of kindness within our community, we help our citizens develop a base of compassion and perspective within themselves and those around them. Now therefore, I, Rich O'Connor, Mayor of the City of Hudson and the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 14th to 18th, 2022, as United Way St. Croix Valley Acts of Kindness Week. In Hudson, and encourage, we in Hudson encourage everyone to participate in spreading kindness and practicing respect, generosity, patience, and consideration of others at all times in order to create a better, kinder, safer, and more peaceful city. And then we move to presentation. Is anybody here from United Way? By any chance? Okay.
Allie is.
My favorite thing about this guy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much for your support. My name's Allison Satter. I'm the Community Impact Director with United Way St. Croix Valley. Really just appreciate the opportunity to highlight kindness. Not that we all need reminders, but sometimes it's helpful, right, to just have a reminder, spread kindness. So, we invite everyone, individuals, families, community, business partners, celebrate with us in spreading kindness and building empathy. During the week, we invite everyone to participate in random acts of kindness every single day, share it on social media, help inspire other people in the communities. And really, it's just truly meant to inspire kindness and spread kindness throughout the St. Croix Valley region. So, appreciate the support, and we look forward to seeing how Hudson celebrates Acts of Kindness Week.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing the proclamation to us.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Great message. All right. Presentation on the 2021 financial report. Can you hear us, April?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone. I am April Anderson from CLA, here to present the 2021 audit report. And so in your agenda packet, there was an audit report notations, a high-level summary. And then the full audit report was also available. But tonight, I'm going to focus in on that few-page summary. There's a lot of useful information in the full audit report, but there's a lot of information in there, so we can't go over all of it tonight. So I will key in on the highlights of what we think are the most important pieces of information for you to know as the governing body of the city. So we'll start with item number one, the auditor's reports or opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion on your financial statements for 2021, and that is considered a clean opinion or the highest opinion that you can receive. So that's obviously what you're striving to obtain, and so positive results there. That means that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and all of the governmental accounting standards that you need to follow as a governmental entity. As we do go through the audit, we are required to issue a management letter and to identify and communicate in that letter any deficiencies that we see in internal controls. And so you'll see here that we do report three material weaknesses, they're called, in internal controls. And they are very common. We work with over 170 governmental entities in just northwest Wisconsin, and we generally have these three different findings issued due to the size and the makeup of the governmental entities that we work with. These are, these three you have seen in the past, so there's nothing new this year. So that's obvious. Even though we're reporting these, it's good that there's no new ones, and you just, you need to be cognizant and aware that they do exist. The first one is limited segregation of duties. So what that relates to is that in the different accounting processes, payroll, receipting, making journal entries, disbursements, not one person should have access to the different parts of that transactional process. So they shouldn't be initiating the transaction. They shouldn't be, they shouldn't have access to reconciling it or be the one reconciling it, and they shouldn't be the one reporting on it. Again, due to the size and the number of people that you have on staff to be able to split these different pieces out, we do see that there is some limited segregation of duties there. The next one that you see is material audit adjustments. So as I said, your report is in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles and governmental auditing standards that you need to follow. However, we do propose certain adjustments as we do go through the audit to help prepare those numbers in accordance with all those rules and regulations that you have to follow. And again, this is very common due to all the rules and regulations that there are to follow as a governmental entity. The very last one, then, is preparation of the financial statements. And so technically, the financial statements are the responsibility of management and governance. However, you look to us to provide some assistance in drafting the financial statements each year. So that is what that one relates to. Again, these are things that you need to be aware of, but nothing that is overly concerning as far as these three issues that are noted here. So those are the high-level results of the audit, and then we'll jump into some of the actual numbers and results of the different operations of the city for the year. So in item number two, you'll see we have the general fund, and we show a five-year trend or comparison here, so you could see how things have changed over the last few years. I'm not going to go over every line item on this page, but just wanted to provide the information, and we'll key in on some of the key benchmarks that we look at in the overall results for the year. So we start off there with the assets, your balance sheet, the assets, then the liabilities. And a lot of the changes from year to year are really truly just timing differences from year end. What we do focus in here, then, is on the part that's called fund balance. So fund balance is the net of your assets less your liabilities, and so it's kind of considered your reserve or what's available to the city. And so there you'll see that the overall change in fund balance was a decrease of $505,000. And that was a result of multiple factors there as far as your revenues did actually end up over budget by $200,000, which included $160,000 with grants and about $100,000 of additional building permits over budget. However, on the expense side, you were also over budget for 2021 by about $750,000. And a lot of this dealt with public safety expenditures going over budget, specifically with the police department being $440,000 over budget. So with those different factors, you ended the year with that deficit result or expenditures exceeding revenues by the $505,000. However, when you do look at what your overall fund balance is made up of and what that balance is compared to the benchmark of expenditures each year, the city is still doing very well. The fund balance, what we look at as far as, as I said, a benchmark, is the unassigned fund balance. So you have 4.487 million in unassigned, or what's considered truly available at year end. And that is 41.7% of the city's annual expenditures in the general fund. And the city policy is to have that percentage at 22.5% to 27.5%. And our general recommendation is to have that percentage between 25% to 33%. So even though that percentage went down and your overall fund balance decreased, you're at 41.7% there. So you're even above the general recommendation that we see. So you're still at a good level there and nothing to be concerned about as far as that overall result. What else you will see in fund balance is that there is an amount called assigned of $547,000. And so that is actual amounts that the council and management have designated to be set aside for certain purposes. So you do have, within that $547,000, about $440,000 set aside for health insurance. And so that is, again, knowing that you'll have some of those future costs and setting aside some of that fund balance that has been built up for that particular purpose. So that is the general fund, overall results for the year. Again, even though there was decline, your unassigned fund balance is still at a good level there. If we move into the next item, number three, here we take a look at the special revenue funds that the city has. And so these funds are considered self-sustaining funds in which there's certain revenues coming in to pay for certain expenditures. And here, I didn't really have any specific major changes between years in any of these funds, so I wasn't going to get into any specifics of either of any of these. You will see that there is the new ARPA Rescue, the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, which was new in 2021, as well as the Golden Rule Donations Fund. Their fund balance at the end of the year is minimal because for the ARPA funding, even though you got that funding in, since it wasn't applied against expenditures during 2021, it wasn't recognized as revenue. So as that funding is applied towards expenditures, it will be recognized as revenue, and you'll see the offsetting expense as well. The next reporting item of the city is the debt service fund, item number four. And so here, this fund is used specifically for that purpose in setting aside levy or other funding sources to pay for your annual principal and interest payments on debt. And so here, generally, you do see a very minimal balance, if any balance, in such a fund, because you're only bringing in what you need to pay out. You do see, though, in 2021, you ended up with a $29,000 fund balance at the end of the year, and that is due to some premiums that were recorded and recognized on issued debt during the year. So that will be used in the future for your future principal and interest payments. During 2021, the city did make all required interest and principal payments. The principal payments for general obligation debt paid out of this debt service fund was $1,670,000, and the city paid about $600,000 in interest out of this fund during the year. The next item is the capital projects funds, item number five. And here you'll see, these can definitely vary quite tremendously year to year depending on the activity that you have. So in the overall general capital projects funds, you'll see that that fund balance went up to $6.2 million, and that was due to the issuance of debt that you had that hasn't all been spent at the end of 2021 yet. So of course, those funds are available then for those future capital projects and purchases that the debt was issued for. The next two items are your TID funds, and you'll see that, which is very common, you had deficits in these funds initially, as they were newer in the past few years, but you have already in 2021 recovered all of the costs that you have had into each of these funds at that point in time, at the end of '21. So you end up with TID number five at a $1.1 million fund balance, and TID number six is at $380,000 fund balance at the end of '21. Then the very next item is component units that the city reports. And so this includes the activities of the Joint Library, the St. Croix Business Park, and the Community Access Board, which you can see there's no real major changes over the last few years in any of these ending net positions for these funds. Then we get into what's called the enterprise funds for the city or your utilities. And these are reported a little bit differently due to the kind of function and operations of these funds, running more like a business-type entity. And so we do provide a little bit more information here as far as the balance sheet, but I am going to kind of get down to the final couple lines in this section. For your water utility, the first utility that you report, you'll see that the overall change in net position was a positive almost $600,000. And that was, you did have a user rate increase during 2021, the fourth quarter had the increase. So you were able to kind of, last year you had a deficit, so this year you were able to turn that around with that rate increase. One benchmark that we look at there is your current ratio. So that's your current assets, your available cash, your near-term receivables compared to your current liabilities. And you want at least a one-to-one ratio there as far as your liquidity. And there you'll see that the water utility is at 15.8. So you're well above that one-to-one ratio. So you certainly have the current assets to pay for those current liabilities that you have in this fund. Looking at the sewer utility, it's a very similar type look that we have as far as what we're focusing on there. Your net position, the very bottom line of this section, was a positive $609,000. So that means your revenues exceeded your expenditures by that much. And that was also, you did have a user rate increase at the beginning of 2021, so positive results there. Here in the sewer utility, you'll obviously see some bigger increases in the balance sheet amounts in 2021. If you look at that utility plant, in the assets, that increased from $7 million to $15 million. And then on your long-term liabilities line, it increased from about $100,000 to $9.3 million. And that is obviously due to the wastewater treatment plant project that you have occurring. And so that's why you see those bigger jumps in 2021. Then as we move on, you report two other utilities or enterprise funds. And on the next page, you'll see the parking utility. And so there, there was a deficit change in net position, a decrease of $52,000. However, looking at that current ratio that I mentioned earlier, your current assets to your current liabilities, the parking utility ends up with a 2.2 ratio. So again, even though you did see the decline there in the net position, your assets available in that fund are, the current assets are plenty to pay for your current liabilities at this point in time. And then the very last enterprise fund that is reported for the city is the ambulance service. And so even though operations discontinued for the city in 2019 for this particular operation, some items have been carried now for the last couple of years and are expected to be settled in 2022. And so you'll see those balances that do remain go away in 2022. So that was a quick peek at all of the different funds and kind of components that are reported of the city. The last thing that we like to communicate during this presentation is item number eight, just your long-term obligations and what the city has outstanding and is to pay for in the future. So here you'll see the general obligation debt is first listed, and so this debt is backed by the tax levy of the city. And so you'll see that that increased during the year because you did issue new debt and you hadn't, you issued more than what you paid for your principal and interest for the year. And so what we look at there is that every municipality in the state has a debt limit as far as 5% of the equalized value within the municipality. And so you'll see at the bottom few lines there is where we show what your debt limit is, the $119 million. And your outstanding general obligation debt of the $23.69 million is about 19.8%. So you're utilizing 19.8% of that debt capacity that you can have. Generally, with the municipalities that we do work with in northwest Wisconsin, they're utilizing about 40% to 50%. So you're under the average that we see there commonly. The other type of debt that you have, then, going back up a few lines, is the mortgage revenue bonds. And so this is in your utilities, and this debt is backed by your user rates and fees that are charged. And so here you'll see you do have 1.5 million almost of water utility debt outstanding. And then this year, you issued that new debt for the sewer project, and so there you have 9.7 million outstanding. And then the other item that is included in long-term obligations is employee leave liability, and that has been estimated at the end of 2021 at about $182,000. So as I said, these are the key pieces of information on a high level of what we feel are important for you to know as far as the results of the audit. Usually, if you have any questions, I open it up at this point in time if you want to do so. Mayor?
Thank you. Anybody? Any questions?
So if there's no questions, I do just want to make sure council understands, we saw that general fund reduced by about $500,000. I mean, that's clearly a big number, unanticipated. 440 of that was police. But if you remember, Minnesota basically had pretty much full COVID restrictions until about July of 2021. That winter of 2020 into 2021 in the spring, I think we all remember the actions we had to take to try to slow things down in our downtown, obviously highly unexpected, not something we could have budgeted for, not something that we could have expected. We had a combination issue of down some officers and the fact that everybody had to work all the time because we couldn't keep up with the amount of traffic that was in our downtown area. So clearly, a highly unanticipated portion of that. And then also, it should be noted that about $85,000 of that number will be reimbursed from insurance of that $500,000, because it does include storm damage that occurred that was. that we will be get reimbursed through insurance still. So, you know, we had really, you know, without those two kind of unexpected things, we would have been about where we thought we'd be. You know, obviously, we had more revenue come in, so that helped when we went over in a few places, but I don't think we could have ever expected that sort of police activity requirement for us. And again, like I also said, we will get some reimbursement from insurance of about $85,000 or so of that number, too, which will be reflected in the next audit that you see.
Anybody else?
I wanted to ask April a question. What you mentioned at the beginning about the management letter and the three material weaknesses, is there anything we can or should be doing? I'm assuming some of that is just due to the nature of a small staff. Should we be outsourcing any items that help improve that, segregating the duties, et cetera? Could you comment for us?
Correct. As far as, it's somewhat inherent in the fact of the limited staff that you do have, but we do continually work with Allison and the team there as far as, you know, providing specific feedback if there's specific areas that we see where maybe some things could be tweaked. And I do know that there is an additional staff member as well now, too. So even in this, you know, 2022 year, I know that changes have been made accordingly, too, to improve. And so, yeah, it is a continual process of, even though you might not be able to completely eliminate some of the findings, to be able to look at the processes and controls and to, you know, have the reviews in place to mitigate the risk of something occurring that shouldn't be occurring.
I think those same three things have been on for seventeen years.
Yes, for several, they were last year.
Yep, and we've been trying to address, and that's one where we did add an accountant. So we went from basically two finance staff to three, although Chrissy's technically part of finance as well, but she's more focused on the utility building side. So we really had two people doing all of our finance. So we did add a third person, which is helping with that segregation of duties.
Great. So that's a, we need to make whatever changes we can. We're the size city and the size staff that we are, so thanks for addressing that. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? April obviously did a great job there, answered everybody's questions. Is that it? All right, April, thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
All right. Good night. Next up, public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget levy. This is your opportunity to comment on the budget and levy. So once again, if you would, if you do have comments, come up to the podium, up to the microphone, identify yourself where you live, and please try to keep your comments brief. Try not to repeat other people's comments. And I think that's it. So, does anybody have any comment?
Rich Hess, 73 Bridgewater Trail. I hope what happens is everyone listens, and we did something up in the northern part of the tier. We know Mr. Vivian, and because of a CFO, so here's what we do. All the towns ganged up. We went down to Madison, and of the 99 and the 33, we sat down with each one of them and explained our situation. We left an impact. Did we get a whole bunch of things done? No, but they know who we are. Each fall on a budget year, the Joint Finance Committee comes to our area. You can testify before them and explain everything you said and complained about to them. The formulas for the cities and the schools, if you can understand them, I want to know how you did it. Okay? And I have a master's degree, and I teach budgeting, and I can't get it. In Grantsburg, it takes five people to do it to understand it. Now, I'm going to come back around and focus what I asked the county. So you're number two on the list. The, let's see, it's called general fund balance. They had 42% sitting in their kiddy. Their employees all got PO'd, and they said, "Look, we want our vacation, we want our time off pay, we want all this in retirement." So that went from 42 to 35. I already told them, coming back to see you again in a group, I'm going to ask you to take you 35 to 25. That's for the library fund. The library should be paid for by the county, and all the stuff that I agreed to it and I didn't do it and all that, that's a bunch of kindergarten stuff, okay? Now, back to you on funded balance. I heard her say 25 to 30%. All the financial planners, and I think Mayor, you're one, mine told me, keep three months in reserve. Well, three out of 12 is 25%. So you're up there at 42, excuse me, 41.7. Want you to ratchet it down. Want you to take it down where we're going to ask the county. 25. Those aren't your dollars, they're my dollars. And if you're not going to use them for we, the people, need to do, then tell me where you're sitting that money at and what kind of interest rate you're drawing on it. You following me? That's our dollars. I don't appreciate you having that much reserve. You don't, because I come to find out from the young lady, your health insurance is paid out of that fund. So I would really like to know what is in that true reserve. And I'll come back and see you again because I represent the people that can't be here, the less fortunate. And when Randy said, "We're hurting," well, Nancy and I gave all our assets away, and we're living on Social Security and VA disability. So we're undersqueezed at this time. When I sat with my financial planner, who sat with New York, the forecast is we are going to be like this to the middle of next year. We should be out by the middle of '24. So that's what they're planning. So that's the information I have for you. I appreciate your service. You will see me again. I work for the less fortunate. And I love Hannah, with your article that hit the St. Paul paper, "We're going to place Ukrainian people here." The school has the same problem you have. No people, no revenue. So I expect out of all the people in Hudson, when I tally up, you're 15,000 in population, the area is 45. If you don't fill 10 buses, 10 buses with the school, and go down to Madison, and if you have to block the roads off, let them listen to you. People are like horses, good horses move by pressure, not with the rain, pressure. So I'm looking for good results. This is my city, and we can do a lot better. You're frugal. I love this place. I live in a little home in the woods. It's beautiful. I can get my wind therapy in less than a mile. So please, get together, do not divide like they did in Trade Lake, all over a pig farm. Of a thousand people, 500, 500, no. Treat someone with kindness. We're brothers and sisters. You're my neighbors. We all get along. If we don't, why? You can have your opinion. I don't like the people down there every Sunday. The words they're using, you need to go look at them. It's all foreign military words, four-letter. That needs to come off. We need to change the perception. This is the best place to live? If it isn't, move. I got some swamp and land up north for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess, for what it's worth. I tell my clients and the financial advisors that I know tell their clients, "Six months, not three."
Times have changed, Mayor, in the last year.
Times are getting scarier. Six months, six months, not three.
If you don't have it, how can you put it away?
Yeah. Just an FYI. I just don't want my clients watching in saying, "You're telling me six months," and this guy's saying three.
No, 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 no. I wish everyone could have a year in reserve.
Yeah.
But we're not there, and we're not going to get there right away. I wish we would.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments?
Move to close the hearing.
Second. Got a motion to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Public hearing is closed. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from October 17th, 2022, regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $1,292,921.77. Approve a drainage and utility easement agreement for 1439 Lee Circle, Kyle and Morgan Baldwin. Approve the 2023 scheduling agreement between the Hudson Boosters Incorporated and the City of Hudson. Approve the lease agreement between Hudson Boosters Incorporated and the City of Hudson for the use of the storage shed at Grand View Park. Approve the 2023 Grand View Park concessions agreement between the Hudson Boosters and the City of Hudson. Approve the police union side agreements to address the 2023 wage adjustments, and approve the salary study.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Discussion possible action on Resolution 25-22 to provide for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $3,905,000 in general obligation community development bonds, Series 2022A of the City of Hudson, establishing the terms and conditions directing their execution and delivery, and creating a debt service account, and awarding the sale thereof. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If we, does everyone have a copy of this? Otherwise, I'll grab them and hand them around real quick. We emailed them earlier, but I know it was late in the day. Josh, want to? Yep, I'll bring them. You guys have covered a lot of financial information already, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of that. But for the council, my coworker, Josh Lowe, is handing out the sale day report, and I'll use that as a reference. For those of you that recall, about a month ago, I came and presented the pre-sale report. The financing that we're talking about today is not related to the city's general fund and is not a part of the city's general fund budget, but is related to a development agreement that you've recently amended for development and tax increment district number five. And at that meeting about a month ago, council will recall, what I had mentioned, the development group, St. Croix Meadows, has at this point met the threshold for triggering a reimbursement to them for costs that they incurred to redevelop the St. Croix Meadows Dog Track site. What that triggered for the city was the issuance of debt to pay them for costs, as I'd mentioned that they incurred to redevelop the site. And then, to repay that debt, we will be using tax revenue that's being generated from the redevelopment out in tax increment district number five. Okay? So one last thing before talking about the sale results, and I believe this has already been touched on, Aaron touched on it with the Finance Committee. I know a lot of the council was here, were here at that point. Part of the process was updating the council's, in the city's, bond rating. And I'm happy to report, we're still at the AA2. I thought we had a pretty good shot to go up to the next level, but as you see in the report, everything that the city is doing, Moody's talks about it very favorably, but when they compare you size-wise, so just your raw tax base compared to other AA1, Hudson will be on the smaller side. And as is very common in Wisconsin, because of levy limits, pretty much all your capital projects are financed with debt. So compared to a lot of AA1s, you also have a elevator, slightly elevated debt outstanding. So those are probably the two biggest factors holding the city back. That being said, though, the AA2 rating is an excellent rating. And that brings me to the sale results. If you can go a few pages back, it's the second to last page of the handout, the one entitled bid tabulation. At 10 o'clock this morning, we put out for bid the sale of approximately $3.9 million in general obligation bonds, and we ended up getting five bids, which is an excellent amount to receive. The winning bid was from Northland Securities with an interest rate of 4.06%. And as you look at the next couple of bidders, two through five, you'll see that they're around 420 to 430. So I do think the Northland Securities bid was an ultra-competitive bid, in that 15 to 20 basis points stronger than the other bidder, so certainly they really wanted to win this bid. The council has always done these sort of sales on a competitive basis, which I think is very good, especially since you have an excellent bond rating. So with that result, then, if you go to the last page of the handout, this was an exhibit that I had for you in the pre-sale report that we talked about a month ago. And at that time, we were estimating the annual payment on this debt issue would be somewhere around $290,000, somewhere in that range, maybe a little bit more than that a year, paid back over the next 20 years. And as I'd mentioned, this is going to be paid back with revenues from tax increment district number five. So it's not a part of your general fund budget. April talked about those special funds, and that TID number five fund will provide the principal and interest payments on this. With the result, the best bid from Northland Securities, the annual payment on the chart here, probably around, averaged around $285,000, $280,000 to $285,000 a year to pay that back over the next 20 years. Why is it a little bit lower than the pre-sale report? Again, it's because the projected interest rates a month ago and where we came in at the 4.05 resulted in lower annual payments for the city. So for this evening, to accept the bid from Northland Securities, there is a bond resolution that locks into the rates and terms that I just reviewed with you, names Northland Securities, the purchaser of the bonds, and then sets those payments locked in for the next 20 years. One last point on that, it would be locked in for the next 20 years, but after year eight, so the first eight years, we can't do anything with the payments, but starting in year eight, at the city's option, you could pay early or refinance if lower interest rates were available. If rates continue to rise, which we all hope doesn't happen, you would be locked in at the rates that we're talking about this evening. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to any questions from you or the council, or if Aaron has anything to add, or Allison, or Mike?
Questions? Anybody? Great job, as always, Sean.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adopt Resolution 25-22.
Second.
Got a motion to second to adopt. Any further discussion? And I think we've decided that resolutions do not need roll call. Is that right?
Correct.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Oh, you're here for the next item?
Trying to get ahead. Move it along.
You in a hurry? All right, discussion possible action on ordinance 9-22, approving a petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval from the Town of Hudson to the City of Hudson, annexing parcel 020-1087-80001, and adjacent right-of-way petition by William A. F. Holst III.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These next two items are kind of one and the same. I want to be clear that what we're talking about tonight is annexation, right? So annexation of this five-and-three-quarter acre, more or less, property does not approve a development. We're aware of what the applicant or the purchaser slash developer is looking at doing in terms of a affordable housing project of approximately 38 units. This does not approve that. What I will say is that obviously our comp plan, our most recent comp plan that was adopted just this past year, as well as the previous comp plan, did identify this area as being a part of the city in the future. I think as, from staff's perspective, it makes sense to annex this property and bring it into the City of Hudson. It's always been part of the plan for a number of years. But obviously, we're going to have to go through a number of approvals, public hearings, and other things like that if the affordable housing project were to move forward. So tonight, you have the annexation ordinance. This is the first item to consider, and then you're going to have the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement will lay out effectively, if that project moves forward, what the responsibilities of, A, the owner, the purchaser, and developer would be responsible for. So you've seen capital cost studies in the past, budget studies, the impact a development would have if we were to... would have if we were to incorporate it within the city. So you'll see, you'll find that it's similar to all those. So there's transportation improvements, there's costs associated with providing water service, sewer service, and the like. So obviously, those things are gonna have to move forward as we proceed, but right now, we're just talking about whether or not, this first item, whether or not this property should be annexed with, you know, into the City of Hudson. So any questions?
You don't have a map showing the property, which is right in the middle and surrounded by the city property?
To the east would be the Lighthouse Development, to the south would be unincorporated town.
All city property? Oh.
No.
Unco, unincorporated, okay.
Right. Yep. So it would be just adjacent to the existing Lighthouse Development.
Here's my deal with this, is everything, we've all got the letters of, against this whole thing, project.
Correct.
There's so much misinformation out there about what is going on.
Sure.
There's different timeframes that are out there that everybody's confused about.
Right.
And now you're asking us to do this big decision whether or not to annex it in. Period. Not approve a project.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So people are kind of obviously concerned, and should be.
Right.
So what, what's the misinformation? Where's that coming from? Is it because of the different municipality?
It's a good, it's a good point. So previously, the applicant had looked at doing what's called, I don't wanna call it annexation by attachment, but there was an attachment agreement that was considered. So what it effectively is, would be an agreement between the city and the Town of Hudson, whereby the town would agree that, you know, this, this would become a city property in the future, but at, we'd address those terms. It was basically, it's a boundary agreement, right? So we agreed to this future boundary. And what happened at that time, a year ago, was the applicant held a neighborhood meeting, which they're required to do. Obviously, that's what kind of kicked off that conversation and the comments from the citizens. And obviously, there is concern about the project itself, I don't, you know, or proposed project. So, you know, obviously, annexations don't require a public hearing, we handle every application the exact same way. We don't treat anybody different, but I mean, that's kind of where it's at right now.
Yeah, and let me add to that, just from a, just for some additional perspective. So when the applicant initially came in, this is a potential tax credit project, and if the land is located in a, in a rural jurisdiction, the Town of Hudson, then the application scores higher on the tax credit evaluation scale. And so originally, when, when the applicant came in, the effort was to retain the property in the Town of Hudson, but to have, as Mike indicated, a boundary agreement of sorts, an attachment agreement, which at some point in the future, that property would have come into the City of Hudson. And there were all kinds of mechanical issues with that, not the least of which, just trying to, trying to get the city and the town on the same page, understanding that the process, and it was just complicated. So from the, from the city's perspective, we said, why don't you approach this from an, from the annexation perspective? It's just much cleaner, and it's easier to understand, and you give the council one thing to vote on, which is annexation before the development. So what we've tried to do is help the process, help clarify the process, so it's just annexation, and it's a policy determination by the council as to whether you want to bring this property into the city's jurisdiction. That's before you, and it takes a two-thirds vote of this body to bring any piece of land into the city's jurisdiction. Now, as Mike indicated, there is a development proposal coming down the way as, as part of this, and you should know that. But what's before you tonight is simply the question of, do you want to bring this five-plus acre parcel into the city by virtue of where it sits geographically and how it's served by, you know, city infrastructure, or do you look at it and make the determination that you don't want to bring it into the city? That's the, that's the question before the body tonight.
Well, I know it sounds cliche, perception's reality. These lawyers, the ownership, didn't get what they wanted to that agreement, and now they're coming to us to ask for annexation, and they're gonna try and jam this project down, although the neighborhood clearly doesn't want it. Is that fair to say, or no?
No. No, I would, I would absolutely not characterize it that way. I would say that, you know, first of all, applicants have the right to pursue the process they, that they want to pursue, and, you know, I don't know that they were, that they got to the point that they wanted with attachment, that's, that's their business, but they came to the city and they said, we make application for, for annexation. Now, it's not jamming it down anybody, right? I mean, it's, it's an app-
Way to look.
Well, but it's, it's an application that runs through, as Mike said, the same process that every application for annexation runs through, right? So they're not being treated any differently than any other applicant, they have the right to ask for annexation, and they're here asking for annexation. That's just where we're at in the process. And I think it's really important to remember, this property, if it comes in through the annexation process, comes in at your lowest level zoning designation, and then they have to ask to have it rezoned, and then they have to ask for a development concept approval through the Plan Commission and through the council, so-
Also a comp plan amendment, because it has been identified as general commercial for the last-
So, so when I say I disagree with that characterization, there's a lot of process, this is really, this is step one in the process. You can decide that you don't want the property in the city, that's a policy decision.
You disagree, 'cause I said lawyer, right?
Yes.
Should've been attorney.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to comment on the fact that it is a parcel of land that we have developed the City of Hudson beyond. So I don't want to see us get a little island of property that remains in the Town of Hudson, and we have no control over it, and what goes on there, maybe nothing goes on there. Some people probably want nothing to go on there, for it to just remain woods, but the property owner does have some rights to request, and like Mike said, they're just going through the process. But we're, in that very neighborhood up on O'Neill Road, is an existing island of residences that are in the Town of Hudson, but they're surrounded by the city. And I don't think that's best practices as we go forward. So I think annexing it in makes sense, and then, yes, we have our process of how to decide what we're going to allow there, and what accommodations they need to make, or what variances they might need. I don't know, but that's my concern, when I look at that particular location, that we already are surrounding that area with city, city land. So anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
I was just gonna ask like a point of clarification. I remember at that neighborhood meeting, at that time, it was discussed that it was more of a workforce housing, and so I heard you say tonight, affordable housing, and I just, I just, as a point of clarification, I understand that's a ways down, if, if this moves forward. Is it affordable? Is it workforce?
It's, it's WEDA tax credit housing, is how I understand it. It's Section forty-two tax credit project, Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. They're looking at thirty-eight units, more or less, I mean, that's what they're looking at, so I guess choose income-appropriate workforce, affordable, you know, I guess he had a, whatever the vernacular is there.
I agree, it makes sense to bring it into the city. I, I don't, I don't contend that. It's just the perception out there right now, is this is just gonna be something that the neighborhood doesn't want. And I think there's some confusion that needs to be settled, once the project and that, all that stuff gets presented to us.
Yep. They'll have to have another neighborhood meeting. There's gonna have to be another neighborhood meeting. I'm sure there'll be frustration amongst area residents. We understand that. There will be, again, public hearings on the rezoning and comp plan amendment with Plan Commission. So, yeah, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of conversation that will, will have to take place as, as, if this were to move forward.
The other thing I would add, too, it's sort of, if you're the owner of property, sort of a risky proposition, right? You make your application for annexation, council approves the annexation, presumably if that's the way that it goes, and the property comes in to the city. There's, there's no guarantee, and staff has been very clear, that there's no guarantee as to what's going to go on that property. That being said, as Mike indicated, currently, it's, in the, future land use plan, it's slated for commercial. So, I mean, there, there is that, and at some point, you are gonna have to deal with that designation. But there's no guarantee moving, moving forward. This is, the only question before the council is, do you bring this parcel in, and then that allows then the applicant and the owner to move forward with their next step?
Yeah, I think my question kind of bouncing off Randy, that it, it sounds like this is a nice, neat package, a blank sheet of land coming into the city, and then we make decisions of what that becomes. But I, I think kind of what you were hinting at is, is this gonna be a snowball, once that comes in? We already know what's kind of step, this is step one, we already have kind of heard what step twelve, thirteen, fourteen wants to be. Is that kind of your concern? That we, we say yay to this, and then, we don't know, right? But we're not working completely blind with what the end game of the owner and developer is, so. But you're right, these are, there are clear, drawn lines of what we're deciding on today and what, what could happen in the future, so.
Well, and, and from a legal perspective, you're not bound to do, i-if you bring the property in to the city, you're not bound to do anything. So the next application comes forward, it has its own set of rules and requirements that you have to evaluate against your ordinance and against state law. So it, it can't automatically become that snowball effect. Every, every request that comes through the city has to go before the Plan Commission and the City Council, and you get to evaluate the merits. That's where the, that's where the controls are.
Okay.
Have we had first reading? Or is this something we need to move along?
Yep, I think it is.
So we need to suspend the rules? Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Marissette?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Ordinance nine dash twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to adopt. Discussion?
I just want to make sure it's explained properly. Everybody's got the same information out of our Plan Commission development.
Sure.
And I know you do a great job, that's not what I'm getting at, but let's just make sure it's all out there.
For sure. Absolutely.
And just as a reminder, given that we have five people on the council currently requiring a two-thirds vote in order to adopt this ordinance, you require a four-fifths vote.
Does the mayor vote?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Everybody understand it? Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on approving an annexation agreement for direct annexation by unanimous approval from the Town of Hudson to the City of Hudson, annexing parcel zero-two-zero dash one zero eight-seven dash eight-zero dash zero-zero-one, and adjacent right-of-way petition by William F. Holst III.
Again, same issue. These are the roles, they're the responsibilities of the owner, the purchaser, developer. If that project were to move forward, what the responsibilities were, would be, you'll see the budget study, the analysis that's done on that, as well as the capital cost study with the necessary transportation improvements, sanitary sewer water improvements, all those things that are all developer expense, hundred percent.
So if they chose to move forward after they were annexed, their first step would be to rezone, is that correct, before they could present the council?
First step would be rezoning with the comprehensive plan amendment. Yep.
That would be included in a comprehensive plan, and that would go before the Plan Commission?
Yep. So what would happen is they'll apply for that, the Plan Commission, well, they'll have to have a neighborhood meeting first, then the Plan Commission will recommend that the council set a public hearing date, council will then set a public hearing date for whatever date, and then the Plan Commission, or no, the council will hold a public hearing, Plan Commission won't, unless the Plan Commission wants to take public comment, which generally they do, and then we, you know, we move forward from there. So it's a, there's a whole timeline.
Sure.
Yep.
And I just want to mention that when people are wondering, how do we know these things are happening, head to the city website. The news bulletins at the bottom often are identifying upcoming hearings, so it's important to get that information in front of people. Of course, it's printed in the paper, but not everybody turns to the back page to read the fine print. So we just want to highlight that and make sure, as you said, Randy, that the public knows, that residents know, people have a chance to follow the process. So I move that we move forward and approve that annexation agreement.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Discussion possible action to appoint replacement to vacant District Two Alderman's person's seat.
So per our new policy we adopted not too long ago, we advertised the position open for thirty days, we received one application from Lynn Wakefield, and so at this point, it's now up to the council to review the application material submitted, and then make a decision whether to appoint Ms. Wakefield or not. The appointment, just so we know, because there's so much time left in the, in former Council Mayor Almond's seat, that the appointment is just until the spring election in April. So what'll happen is, we'll have a special election at the same time as a regular spring election to fill the seat. So of course, the person that, if you appoint to fill it, could apply to run, but the appointment would only be until the completion and the seating after that special election in April.
Just a point of clarification on that, then, so if they're, whoever wins in April, then is that just a one-year term?
Yep, it's just fulfilling of the unexpired term for another year.
Okay.
And then we're back in the regular cycle then.
Okay.
Is it proper to have her speak to us?
It's up to the council.
Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, I'm Lynn Wakefield, I've lived in Hudson since nineteen eighty-six, and have been a resident of Heritage Greens for almost eleven years. I taught for thirty years and had held many leadership roles as an educator, making policy decisions for buildings. Majority of my time was in middle school. After I retired from that, I work part-time at US Bank, I'm a CASA volunteer for St. Croix County, and I have worked on committees and groups before, I'm an excellent listener, active listener, I'm a hard worker, and would do my due diligence to make sure I'm well-informed on issues, so that I can effectively represent the people of the area.
Why do you want to get involved with this stuff? I say that both ways, Lynn.
Yeah. You know, I, I've lived in this community since nineteen eighty-six, and I've watched it grow and thrive, and, but still maintaining, like someone said, that river town community atmosphere. And I want to see that continue, that the place that I love and raised my family in, I want to see, I want to be a part to make sure that everyone's views are represented, and that I can speak on the concerns for the people in my area.
And would you plan on running again in April, Lynn?
Yes.
And then so forth after that, probably?
It's only one year, right?
I don't remember seeing that in the application.
It's only one year, that's why you're missing.
Yeah. Anybody else? Thanks, Lynn.
Thanks.
I'm sure you'll be available if anybody has any more questions.
Well, I'd hopefully appoint Lynn to District Two for the remainder of Almond's seat.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second, discussion.
Well, in the past, I've said that District Two, all districts deserve representation, and I'm, I was hoping that we'd have more applicants so that we'd actually have a choice, but I see that she- choice, but I see that she's well-qualified, and so I'm in favor of this as well.
She's a teacher, so you guys can do all that.
Anybody else?
It's true, if she taught middle school, she can probably handle this group. I don't know.
That's why she's sitting next to Randy.
Right.
No rulers.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Congratulations, Lynn. Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Let's make sure Becky asks.
What? I wasn't listening.
Mayor votes on that motion, so he voted aye.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Again, Lynn, congratulations. We look forward to having you on the council at the next meeting. Discussion possible action to approve ordinance number eleven dash twenty-two, setting the twenty-twenty-three budget levy, approving the twenty-twenty-three water and sewer utility budgets.
So, as we've talked about at the Finance Committee level, and then also with their getting out the information for the public for the hearing tonight, you know, just to kind of basically remind the council, we're looking at a roughly, basically a four percent tax levy increase for operations. But because we had a little over two percent net new growth, and we've also had strong equalized value and assessed value growth, it's really about a little less than a two percent actual tax impact. We did include in this packet a tax impact run by elders that'll show what your tax increase would look like for the city's portion of your taxes, remember, just the city's portion, for various values within the city. So, using that same four hundred thousand as an example for what we use for the CIP, you'd be looking at a thirty-one dollar and ninety-one cent increase in your city portion of the property taxes for the year. So, I guess with all that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the budget and levy.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Got a motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Marsette?
Yes.
Newtonson?
You?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Hall? Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance eleven dash twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adopt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Council hearing for the consideration of a certified complaint filed regarding short-term rental located at ten thirty-one Second Street. All right, so this is a hearing, what is this, a public hearing, or? Nope. No, I can take it. Okay. So, Chapter one forty-one dash nine sub D of the code provides that any resident or owner of property within the city may file a sworn written complaint with the city alleging violations as grounds for potential revocation of a short-term home rental license. In accordance with that ordinance on or about August sixteenth, Hudson resident Matt Mackey of one-one-zero-one Second Street submitted a formal letter of complaint to the city regarding activity at the property located at one-zero-three-one Second Street, which is a short-term, licensed short-term rental in the city of Hudson. Mr. Mackey owns and resides at the adjacent property, so his property is directly adjacent to one-zero-three-one. One-zero-three-one is owned by Brooke Fleetwood, who operates the property as a short-term rental, subject to the city's short-term rental license. The complaint alleges multiple code violations, such as noise, setback violations, parking violations arising from the use of the property resulting in multiple police calls over the past two years. There have not been any citations, to my knowledge, issued to that property. But in support of the allegations, Mr. Mackey submitted pictures, which you have, he submitted audio recordings, four of them, which my office reviewed for loud music audible on his deck, and copies of what he alleges are the violated ordinances. Chapter one forty-one dash nine sub D provides a procedure for processing the complaint, which includes proper notification, a due process hearing before the city council to determine if a license should be revoked. By letter dated October fourteenth, my office notified Ms. Fleetwood of the complaint, directing her to appear before the council tonight, and show cause why her short-term license for the property should not be revoked. At this hearing, the complainant has an opportunity to speak, I'm not certain whether he's here tonight. Ms. Fleetwood has the opportunity to produce and cross-examine witnesses or present relevant evidence, and be represented by council if she so chooses. Chapter one forty-one dash nine sub C provides that a license may be revoked by the common council during the term of a license year and following a due process hearing. And the only really relevant basis here would be sub three, which would be any violation of local regulations, which, based on the number, frequency, severity, and the relation to the short-term home rental property, its owners, tenants, occupants, or visitors substantially harm or adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The council, after hearing everything that's presented, then can either make a decision at this meeting, or it can wait, it has twenty business days from the hearing to actually issue a decision on revocation. Written decisions must specify the reasons for the council's decision, which, if you make a determination tonight, you can certainly direct me to draft and issue after this meeting, or we can take it back at the later, at the next meeting, and make that final determination. So, at this point, everybody has the complaint, there are exhibits attached to the complaint. I think Ms. Fleetwood also presented or provided some information here. Is Mr. Mackey here tonight? Okay, he's not here, so you have the written complaint before you. I know Ms. Fleetwood is here as well. I'm not going to walk through the various aspects of the complaint. I think it speaks for itself. If anybody has any questions, we can certainly discuss those. But we can certainly also give Ms. Fleetwood the opportunity to respond to the written complaint, mayor, and then we can have a conversation from there. All right. Is that where you'd like to begin?
Hello, I'm Brooke Fleetwood, the owner of the Goth Castle located at ten thirty-one Second Street. Before I speak on my neighbors' complaints to the city, I would like you to listen to a video of one of the nights in question back in August, when the police were called to my Airbnb.
Hi, I'm Officer Reddick. Just to let you guys know, this is an Airbnb, right? There's some neighbors here that kind of don't like the person that owns this, so they like to call in noise complaints. So, this neighbor called one in. You guys are not doing anything wrong. I know, I've been told there's something in this person's contract that states that cops have called, you guys get fined. So, I'm going to write a report saying you guys were not doing anything wrong. I got called here, I had to respond, but just so you guys are aware.
Yeah, because they have time like for ten o'clock, so we're not playing music. Are we allowed to sit over here after?
I am going to tell you, yes. I've been here for about five minutes listening. You guys are just fine. You're talking, relaxing. I haven't heard anybody yell. I haven't heard any loud music. Just letting you guys know, this guy does not like this house being an Airbnb.
[inaudible]
Yep. So, like I said, you guys are not doing anything wrong. Feel free to carry on, but just letting you know, this guy likes to call. I was here last weekend for the same thing, and it was absolutely nothing, so.
Are we getting that we're getting fined?
No, and I'm going to write a report, because she keeps track. I've been told, but there will be a case number taken and reported, but I'm going to document you guys are not doing anything wrong. If she does come after whoever rented this place for that, it'll be documented if you guys are not doing anything wrong. All right? Have a good night.
I am here to defend my business, my rights, my mental health, while being harassed by Matt Mackey for the past two years of owning the Goth. I have a packet made of evidence of the non-stop police calls, along with a letter of Chief of Police Jeffrey J. Williamson, and the packet dates back to two thousand and three. It seems very important to see that Mr. Mackey has established a pattern of intimidation, surveillancing, and in attempt to silence his neighbors. Within days of receiving an accepted offer from the seller Jay Clarine, I received a phone call from Matt Mackey. Matt told me that if I purchased the property with intent for Airbnb, that he would call the police on me every time it was rented out. He also said, do not paint the house pink. Matt wanted to clarify that his friend David Gray, who is a city inspector and himself, made up the short-term ordinance together, which I find is odd, because Matt is not a city official. Matt clearly does not want neighbors. I gave him the opportunity to purchase it from me, and he declined. Immediately after closing on the property, Matt set up surveillance cameras facing my property, leaving me feeling uneasy, recording my kids, my every move, and my clients. One of the first nights that I stayed at the Goth House, I decided to hot-tub around nine PM. Shortly after I hot-tubbed, the cop showed up for one of my first of many noise complaints. The cop stated that there was no violation made, and told us to have a good evening. Purchasing ten thirty-one Second Street has been short of a nightmare from fighting to obtain my short-term license to non-stop police calls, the hell and the anguish it took to just get licensed, and now I find myself once again fighting for one of my many businesses. I obtain very strict rules for my rentals, including a noise ordinance rules. However, people are allowed to have fun. Fun is not illegal. We live on one of the busiest streets in downtown Hudson with many bars, the restaurants, and the hustle of the people on the move. I have been a resident in Hudson since two thousand and six. I moved here from Indiana. I've purchased seven homes in Hudson, currently owning five, paying thirty-five thousand dollars a year in land taxes. Myself, my beauty business, and my short-term rentals bring a great deal of revenue to all of downtown Hudson's businesses. My rental customers and my beauty customers come from all over the United States to support our beautiful River Town. I couldn't move and sell all my businesses in Hudson, but that would be too easy. I love my small town, but I don't like the politics, the lawsuits, and the non-stop harassments. At thirty-four years old, never in a million years would I thought that I'd be fighting with the city of Hudson over keeping my businesses active, nor would I ever think that I'd be fighting with my neighbors over continuous unfounded complaints to the police in the city hall. The taxpayer dollars could be spent in much better ways than sending the police to my property every time someone walks outside. At what point is this defamation and harassment against me? When is it going to be taken against Matt Mackey? Once again, I have never received a citation or a fine from the police department at my property ten thirty-one Second Street, yet the city is trying to pull my license, but under what ground? For a neighbor that has harassed me since day one, this is just another step that Matt Mackey is taking to try to bring me down. And if he was here, I would ask him again in front of all you guys that the property is for sale, and if he wanted to pick his neighbors, he should have. On August twenty-fourth, I'm with the Chief of Police, and I would like to read you the email that the chief sent to me. Hello, Brooke. This email is confirming our meeting today that took place around three PM, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. At this time, we searched our records regarding your property at ten thirty-one Second Street. Though we found several complaints about the disturbances occurring, we did not find any records to anybody who had ever been cited for any violations at your property. It should also be noted, it did not appear your personal, you haven't received any violations or warnings regarding any of the complaints. The last noise complaints we had at ten thirty-one Second Street was on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and that was from the Chief of Police.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thanks, Brooke. All right. Anybody, we might have questions here, Brooke. Anybody have any questions? Anybody have, is there anybody here that wants to speak on this complaint? It's not a, it's not a public hearing. Right. So, it's a, it's a hearing with the property owner. And the other thing I want to make clear is that the city, this is not the city taking action to pull a license. This is a process-driven hearing. The city has a process for the submission of complaints. When a complaint, a verified complaint is submitted, we have to have this hearing, and this process moves forward. So, nobody at this council asked for this hearing. The hearing is a result of the complaint that was submitted. So, that's why we're here procedurally, just so that we're all on the same page. I guess, I'm just not understanding this, frankly. Do, is, was there any finding here from any of the times that the police were there that there was a violation?
That's what I just stated in my email after our meeting with the Chief of Police, October twenty-fourth, that there's never been any violations, any fines, nothing. I just have a disgruntled neighbor, or neighbors, that live by me that don't like that this is an Airbnb.
Sure.
And it's for sale, so if they want to pick their neighbors, they can do so, just like I did with the pink castle. That little pink house beside me, I wanted to pick my neighbors, so I bought it.
But to clarify, no, no citations have been issued.
And Brooke, you have all this, these citations, this is from neighbors all the way around that he has called on?
Yes, so he...
It's not just you, he's called everybody around.
He...
Okay.
It is just that address in there?
All of this?
Well, there's, there's also other information in here that's included, that does include Mr. Mackey's other calls to the police over other issues. So, there's a lot in there.
With other neighbors?
And other people from like Walmart and stuff. There's a large number of things in here.
He seems to like pick out who he wants to target for a couple of months, is what I'm getting from the police reports. So, right now, I'm the target.
Brooke, could I ask you, so you met with the police chief, and are you saying that you weren't notified that there had been a police call? Because as part of your agreement for your short-term rental, you or designated property manager needs to be within, what, thirty miles?
Yes, that is correct.
Be on location here in the city?
Yes.
So, no one called you that evening to say, boy, your current occupant is noisy? Did you hear from anyone at that time?
If I didn't have cameras, I wouldn't know that a police was ever at my house.
Right, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't contact the owner unless there was an actual violation.
Sure.
So, there is indication here, I believe one time during construction, there was some parking on the street, Ms. Fleetwood was contacted, and the vehicles were promptly, then, I believe, Ms. Fleetwood contacted renters, and the vehicles were promptly removed.
That was when all that construction was happening, and my guests didn't know where to park.
But that was an actual issue, but we're not going to contact the owner if there's not a problem. You know what I mean? A call doesn't automatically generate a contact.
Right, and I was thinking of a police officer, that they, no one saw something that was so inappropriate that they reached out to you?
I believe it only happened one time, and that was a parking issue during construction. It was addressed right away.
Thank you.
Brooke, can you explain your management of the facility? I believe I know that you have cameras in every, and you monitor that, or you have someone monitoring?
I am the only one to that camera.
Okay. And so, if you see problems or have issues, you head it off?
It is taken care of immediately.
Okay.
Yep.
And no one has ever called you specifically?
There has been no cop that have ever called me to tell me that there is anything ever wrong at my Airbnb's, none of them.
Have you ever had to ask any of your renters to leave early due to noise or other inappropriate behavior?
No.
And is this always, you call your, you own it, do you live there sometime and rent it out other times? Is this always, people come in, I mean, is this always for rent? Always transitory?
It is, all of my properties are always for rent, but I kind of move wherever I want to move.
Sometimes you're living in your own house.
Or like if I'm redoing a part of the house, I'll move in because it's easier to work till eleven, twelve, and then go to bed. But, yeah, I'll be wherever.
So, both, okay. Because in your note here, I guess maybe, you know, it's, you say, at what point is this defamation, harassment against me? What action is going to be taken? So, this isn't really a counter complaint, though?
No, this is, this is an opport...
Your response to?
Yeah, this is an opportunity for Brooke to be heard, and for the council to make a determination as to whether there's any action warranted. to make a determination as to whether there's any action warranted. If, if there are issues between neighbors, those are issues between neighbors that get resolved in a different manner that doesn't involve the city. We are just working within the city's short-term rental ordinance at this point to address this issue, and then we can move on.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I do have a question, though. At what point is this harassment and using the police to harass me multiple times?
Well, it's a, it's a civil issue between neighbors. I mean, that's, I mean, if, if you have an issue with your neighbor, you resolve that through a different forum than, than this. That's not something that the city would become involved in.
Well, you guys are talking about how you're so low on tax money, but you're allowing him to use tax money to harass me.
Different discussion.
Every, every cop call uses that tax money to come to my house to harass me, and you guys haven't shut it down yet, and let him know, hey, stop harassing her, there's nothing going on here.
Time, yes.
If you guys need the tax money, you should be finding the person that's doing these harassment calls.
All right, so, point will take in. As I, in reading the memo, Nick, there are, uh, three options here. One is revocation, one is warning, and one is no action.
Correct.
So those are your options here tonight. And if we take no action, is that a, an affirmative motion, no action, or just?
We, yes, that would be a motion to take, a formal motion to take no action.
Can I ask just another point of clarification? You had mentioned something about, um, we can also think on this. We have 20 days to respond, and we got, received a lot of information this morning to go through, and this is a lot of information to go through, too. Uh, and, and frankly, I want to do, honor my responsibility. This is specifically, um, the Goth houses in the district I represent. I have two neighbors who have, um, very different perspectives, and I feel like I need more time to make a really informed decision so that I am doing due justice, uh, on this situation.
Yeah, by, by ordinance, we have 20, the council has 20 days to, to make a, 20 business days to, to make a determination.
You know, we have our chief safety officer, our chief of police telling us, there's nothing there. There's, there's, he says he has not been cited, she hasn't. So I think this is a bigger problem outside of what we should be dealing with. So I would, I will move to not take any action on this, at this time. I, I think this is a civil thing between them and that, and I don't think she's done anything wrong with her, uh, business down there. I think there's something going on, because it's not just her property, it's the other properties that are all, it's all interwoven, and that's a civil thing between them. But our chief of police is saying no.
All right, any, uh, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right, and we've got, okay, so we've got a motion and a second, and Nick, again, reading your memo, you're suggesting that waiting 20 days puts us up against, uh?
Well, you, you can wait 20 days, but you don't have to. You can certainly, if, if your motion is to take no action and effectively to dismiss the, the complaint, that can be your, your action tonight, and then this matter is, is closed.
So, and what, what baffles me, I guess, is that the complaint isn't here, and there's nobody else here that is complaining, uh, that has come forward.
I actually have a whole team that are willing to talk.
Yeah, we're ready.
And they're ready, and I have neighbors here, but yet the guy who wants to complain isn't here, I'm a little confused.
Yeah. All right, any, anybody else who got a motion and a second?
I have a question. So, Nick, all right, so we've got this complaint. What is the evidence that this information is true? Is there any evidence of, of wrongdoing other than this complaint?
Well, the evidence that was submitted, the complaint that was submitted is a verified complaint that he had to swear under oath and, and have notified. You have the, the pictures that, that he submitted, and there were four videos that he submitted essentially from his deck, recording exterior noise, some music coming from the, the backyard of, of the rental. Uh, so that's, that's what was submitted with, with the complaint.
Could you tell what time of day that was recorded?
Uh, it was during daylight hours.
Yeah, noise ordinance is at 10:00 PM.
Oh, well.
The noise ordinance is at 10:00 PM, and my customers are very aware of the noise ordinance because they will get fined $1,000.
That's why I was asking, just to clarify it, and he indicated that was-
During daylight hours.
Outdoor speakers, but during the day, so you're right, that does fall in your-
So I make sure that my customers and clients know the rules, and I will watch the cameras to make sure that they are complying because I'm not going to get into another Hudson lawsuit again, because I'm actually over all the shit that you guys put me through. I'm trying to just run a business here, and you guys are trying to make it happen.
She brings a lot of money to this community.
And I can't afford any taxes.
And celebrities. Yes, or a home. Yes.
All right, just a second.
No, go ahead.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved.
All right, I mean, it's, it's over.
No, it's fine. Yeah.
All right, appreciate you being here, though, to, and-
I'm here in support of her, but if you guys don't sell, that's my share.
And her support, yeah. All right, um, so, uh, communications, all I would say, all I've got is, uh, it's election day tomorrow. Anybody who has not already voted, make sure to get out to vote, do your public duty, public service.
Oh, Becky. A round of applause for Becky, uh, the clerk.
All right, anybody else, anything?
Oh, just briefly, Ken, I know you guys are busy with this whole week of elections and stuff and staff, and you somewhat short. A lot of information came late today on, for this meeting, so if we could get better at getting us that.
I have a conversation with the council, Brooke, today as well, because I, I do apologize. So I know on the CIP side, one of the issues was, is that we had Public Works meet last week, they had a, a late recommendation, which then I had to work with our financial advisors to try to figure the numbers out for, so that's why that piece came late. Um, and then we recognized with this one as well.
I totally get it, but it just, today was, I've known, that's been a lot of information on one day.
Yep, we will make sure that doesn't happen again, and I apologize.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.